This conference will now be recorded.
Would you be trying to ask us to read the rules for virtual meetings?
Sure. If you are participating via the go-to meeting and you do have a question for an agenda topic, please wait courtesy of the floor for that agenda topic. Simply type your name and address into the chat feature along with your question, and the moderator will read it aloud for the board and public to hear.
Thank you, Randy. All right, first on our agenda this evening, oh, before I get started, I would like to note that the board did meet in executive session right prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. And we'll get things started this evening with our first presentation by Mr. Scott. It is our second reading of the proposed 2022 budget. Welcome, Scott.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we have the second reading of the budget. I will start with our general fund. In the general fund, we have projected revenue of $6,965,444 in property tax. Our real estate transfer tax, which is half of a percent on each sale of real estate in the township, is projected to be $700,000 for 2022. For our local services tax, we are projecting $600,000. For our earned income tax, we are projecting $3.5 million in 2022. For our business privilege tax, we are projecting $2,350,000 for 2022. For our admissions tax, we are projecting $1.3 million, which is mostly the revenue from Dorney Park. For our cable TV and franchise tax, we are estimating $325,000 of revenue. For licenses, permits, and fees, which includes both police fines and fees as well as community development permits, et cetera, we are projecting $551,480. We are estimating that we will receive $4,500 in interest as well as $254,684 on various grants and gifts, all offset by $169,408 of discounts, which mostly are due to real estate taxes. All in all, projected revenue for 2022 for the general fund is $16,381,700. For expense, we have in the administration category, $6,938,374 estimated, as well as in the police, $5,858,312, as well as public works expenses of $3,356,458 and $401,360 for Parks and Recreation. The total expenses will equal $16,554,504. Our revenue minus our expense leaves us with a deficit of $172,803, offset by an estimated cash carryforward balance of $687,600. Also, in the general fund, we have transfers out totaling $2,784,334, which will leave us at the end of next year with a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $3130,463. In our capital fund, which is primarily funded through transfers, although does receive some grant funding, we have $46,970 of revenue budgeted. We also have in the expense category, $112,000 for administration capital expenses, $217,113 in police capital expenses. For public works, we have $1,174,700, as well as $202,000 for the Parks and Recreation program and $850,000 set aside for the Where's Damn Capital project. In all, in the capital fund, our total expense is $2,555,813. In the capital fund, our revenue less expense is $2,508,843 of a deficit, and we should have an estimated cash carryforward of $147,679 at the beginning of January of 2022. That deficit is funded in part by $600,000 worth of bond proceeds as well as a transfer in from the general fund of $1,788,113. At the end of next year, we expect to have a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $19,649 in the capital. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. We have our estimated revenue in this fund equals the estimated expenses that we have just due to the nature of grant accounting. So we have $729,750 of revenue budgeted. And for the expenses, which total $729,750, we have $300,000 for public works, $300,000 as a capital investment in our water and sewer infrastructure, as well as $129,750 to our volunteer fire companies. Our estimated cash at the beginning of next year is $1,044,337, and we should have a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $314,587. In our open space fund, we don't have any revenue budgeted in that fund. However, we do have some expenses, which are capital in nature, and total $100,000 total. We have a cash carryforward amount of $416,323 in that account, in that fund. And so at the end of next year, with a $100,000 decrease due to the expense, we should have $316,323 in the open space fund. In our state highway aid fund, we receive grant revenue as the primary source of revenue here. We are budgeting $665,000 of revenue, which is the total revenue amount. We expect to have $350,000 of administration expenses as well as $449,142 of public works expenses, totaling $799,142 worth of expenses. Our revenues over expenses leaves us with a deficit of $134,142 in the fund, which is offset by a cash carryforward balance of $303,422, leaving us with an unappropriated budgeted unappropriated reserve next year of $169,280. In our refuse and recycling fund, we expect to bring in $2,787,300 of billing revenue as well as $111,000 in grant revenue and $30,700 for miscellaneous revenue, totaling $2,929,000 of revenue in the fund. We expect to see expenses of $2,968,564, which leaves us with a budgeted deficit in that fund of $39,564. However, that is offset also by a cash carryforward number of $607,029 and a transfer in from the general fund of $300,000. So at the end of next year, we expect to have in that fund a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $867,466. In our water fund, which will see a 7.1% increase in the water rate, we expect to receive $4,221,400 in revenue, in our billing revenue. We also expect to see $34,500 in miscellaneous charges, penalties, et cetera. Totalling, total revenue in that fund is $4,255,900. In the expenses in the water fund, we have $3,201,759 of administration expenses as well as $1,134,600 as a capital investment in our infrastructure. Our total expenses in the water fund are $4,336,359. Excuse me, sometimes numbers are hard to say after this many of them, which leaves us with a total deficit in that fund. A difference between the 4.2 million in revenue and the 4.3 million in expense roughly, the total deficit is $80,459, which is offset by a cash carryforward of $2,615,222. We also have transfers out of the water fund, which is our payment for the water fund portion of the bond of $400,500. Our sewer fund, we expect to see $2,942,000 worth of billing revenue as well as $500 of work on property revenue, $10,500 on licenses, permits, and fees, and $311,500 on miscellaneous charges. Total revenue in the sewer fund is budgeted at $3,264,500. In the expense for the sewer fund, we have $2,781,454 of administration expenses as well as $980,500 in capital investment, totaling total expenses of $3,761,954, which leaves us with a deficit of $497,454 in the sewer fund. However, this is offset by an estimated cash carryforward of $5,5,727, as well as we have a transfer into the sewer fund of $250,000, which is a payback from the water fund on a loan, which will leave us with a total budgeted unappropriated reserve of $4,758,273. I think I forgot to say that the water fund at the end of next year will also have a budgeted unappropriated reserve. That number is $2,134,263. In our debt service fund, we expect to see no revenue in this fund. This is one of those funds that's funded primarily. Cash is moved in via budgeted transfer, and then the expense piece goes out via interest expense. So we do expect to see $359,021 in expenses in this fund, which also we will see a $495,000 principal payment for that debt, which is entirely offset by $854,021 of a transfer in, both in the water fund and the general fund. So we will have $0 in that fund at the end of next year because it's entirely awash. Our last fund is the fire fund. In the fire fund, this is primarily funded by real estate taxes as well, primarily specifically for the fire fund itself. So that tax, we have budgeted to receive $1,134,518, which is the total revenue amount. And then we also expect to see total expenses of $1,047,781. We expect to see a surplus of $86,737 in 2022, which is added to our cash carryforward amount of $471,831, which will leave us with a total unappropriated reserve in the fire fund of $558,568. That is the second reading of the budget.
Thank you, Scott. All right. That being said, any questions?
I have some comments. So first of all, thank you, Scott, for the excellent job that you did pulling this together over the past three months probably. And thank you, Randy, for all of your support in order to do so, as well of all the staff members. Michael Elias being the only one here tonight. But, you know, thank you, everyone, those present and absent. I'd like to go on record with comments I made previously during the budget workshop meeting, and I like to do that by making a motion. I make a motion that the BOC shall provide direction to revise the 2022 budget to reduce expenditures, to eliminate the 2022 budget general fund deficit, which is currently the $172,000. Continual annual general fund deficits will ultimately create the need to raise South Whitehall Township taxes. And we must eliminate the general fund deficit to avoid increasing taxes in the future. This motion is consistent with my comments during the budget workshop meetings and the finance committee meetings when we touched on the subject during the past several months. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner Wolk. Although I will say, also at our meetings, our budget workshop meetings, we talked in detail about the request to reduce the expenses as much as possible by staff. And I think staff did, in fact, go back and reduce expenses as much as they could. I do not think we are in a position where we can cut any more expenses without threatening services to some degree. So I'm not in favor of that. The only thing that I believe at this point that would be considered looking at is the estimated revenues possibly that are coming into the township. Have they all been estimated to the point that we feel comfortable? Or are there revenues that we might be missing? But as far as expenses go, I don't see where we would have any more leverage to change that.
I'm not going--
I'm not sure what you were referring to. If you were referring to expenses or revenues or both?
I wrote the motion, and I read the motion to address expenditures. I did not address revenues. I have one comment. This doesn't really answer your question, but I would like to highlight. So when we were in the last budget workshop meeting, I gave my thought and direction, which was do whatever you need to do to reduce the deficit to zero. And then later in the meeting, like towards the wrap-up of the meeting, there was a comment that, and which turned into direction, to reduce the expenses by 5%. It was just sort of a around 5% number. By observation, the 5% didn't reduce the deficit to zero. The $172,000 is like another 1.1%. So that's what we're talking about. If you go to zero, you take out another 1.1%. I won't comment about whether that's possible or not.
I stand in my comment. I don't believe, I believe staff has done everything, and we went into great length and discussion about the expenses. I believe they've all been reduced to the point where everybody was comfortable at our meetings. So I'm a little concerned with the other two commissioners not being here to bring this now for a change again. I think it would have been appropriate for you, if you had this planned, to at least share this with the rest of the board prior to the meeting instead of waiting till tonight when we make a motion.
Okay, on that, a fair comment. Two weeks ago at the BOC meeting, I explained my, this exact viewpoint that I hold without making a motion. And I turned to the rest of the board, and I asked, could you share your viewpoint? And most of you did. So this is not the first budget reading meeting where I'm making this comment. I made it at the last meeting, and I'm making it again now via making the motion.
Well, again, I would not agree with the expenses side of it. I would not have a problem. I think staff would probably have more flexibility with looking at the revenue side of it if we had anything that might be not accounted for there that could make a difference. I'm not sure if you can answer that off the top of your head or not. It's just something to consider. But from an expenses side, I think we talked at length about this, and I don't support cutting the expenses at this point any further. But we do have a motion on the floor. If there was any other comments or thoughts prior to opening it up?
I guess my only question for Commissioner Wolk is, you're asking to reduce $172,000. So is there a line item that you're suggesting should be cut from the budget?
No, I'm not putting forward any single line item. In preparing the motion, I have no intention to do that. I'm going to follow some of the approaches that have been expressed by this board in the time that I've been here, which is I look to the staff who knows the budget, who had all the review meetings with the staff members, who knows, you know, what's already been taken out and knows best what might still be possible. And we talked at length of the additional potential cost reductions during the budget workshop meetings. So I don't come here with any particular line item. I would suggest to go back and consider all of workshop discussions and all the discussions you have, which they have to see where there's more room.
I believe we already, we did that and asked staff to do that. To ask them to do that again, you know, undermines your initial request for them to do it. Why would they, when you ask them to go back and cut as much as they could potentially cut? They did that and came back to us, and now you're asking them to cut again. If they had more to cut, they would have cut it from the beginning. And so again, I come back to, I wish if this was something you felt so strongly about and had a plan to make a motion this evening, that you could have shared it with the board prior to the meeting so that we could have had some discussion instead of having it now when we have two board members who can't vote on it. I don't support cutting any more expenses. And if they have revenues that we can look at, that's one thing. But I think we've cut everywhere we can cut.
I'll make, I'll just make one more comment. Well, first, I didn't know we were going to have the commissioners here tonight, but that's besides the point. So I will offer this, and this is the discussion that Randy and Scott are aware of. Okay, I offer this to be helpful, maybe. We, in any given year, our actual revenues exceed our budgeted revenues. And our actual expenditures are less than we budget. Upon learning that, my main thought is, which I did communicate, we should budget closer to what we actually expect to happen based on history. All right, so if we go back to 2021, I know the year's not complete. This is Scott's estimate. As of two weeks ago, the expected deficit was $631,000. But you actually expect maybe a $700,000 surplus, which is a swing of $1.3 million. And the year before, the pandemic year, so maybe you throw it out because it's the COVID year. But we also had a deficit of $653,000. And the actuals were a $1.7 million surplus because everybody did a great job cutting costs, and that was a swing of 2.3 million. So referring back to that history, right, where we have a swing last year of 1.3 million, and I'm suggesting we take 172 down to zero. It seems to me, if you just look at that empirical information, it's within the realm of possibility.
I guess my other comment would be, I know it was mentioned earlier. I don't remember if it was Commissioner Morgan or Wolk, but I don't think revenue is anything that we should be recalculating at this point. I wouldn't be comfortable adjusting the revenue. We've gone through a number of workshops to arrive at those numbers.
We've also gone through a number of workshops to arrive at the expense numbers, too. So I don't, I don't agree with going back again and asking staff to cut again. You asked them to cut as much as they could cut, and they came back and did just that. So now we're asking them to go back and do it again. I think you're going to start to undermine services. I truly do.
I have more information I could provide, but I'll choose not to. I made a motion. You're the chair, Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second?
Do we have any, well, before we do that, are there any other questions or comments? Or any--
May I say a few words?
You sure can.
Wonderful. It may help to know on the budget savings changes that we made, that we emailed to the board, the majority of the budget cuts that we looked at did not pertain to the operating expenses, but they did pertain more so to the capital expenses, which we were able to bring lower to a degree of $642,000 through various sewer means. So, you know, from a presentation standpoint, when you see, you know, an operating deficit of $172,000 between revenue and expenses, I think we were able to, the bottom line number, the total budgeted unappropriated reserve at the bottom of the page, that's really the most important number. I understand the area that you're coming from, Commissioner Wolk, where, you know, we would want to see revenues and expenses kind of match in the operating section. And I certainly would want to see that, not just for the general fund, but for most of the funds that we can do that for across the board, especially our enterprise funds, which are meant to eliminate each year. So I understand that. I also see the work that we've done coming from two prior years of deficits that are budgeted of $500,000 and $600,000 down to $172,000. You know, I think for us to go to zero would be a great thing, but also for us to go to 172 from 600, and prior years being at 600, is a good step in the right direction, if that's, if that's a mindset you want to explore. You know, from, from a, questions I would have out of this conversation would be, if we don't want to touch revenues in terms of bringing those closer to where actuals would be, what do we necessarily do with that money each year as that's going to be budgeted cash coming in the door that we don't really have a bucket to place it in terms of an expense? So those are just, those are just some thoughts. If that's helpful, great. If it's not, also great. But just thought I'd let everyone know.
I guess my only comment, I'd still stand by the deficit should be zero. We'll see how this turns out this evening. If it remains 172 down from $600,000, sure, it's a step in the right direction. The future goal needs to be zero deficit as we go forward. I believe we need direction when we create our budgets. We should have zero deficit. And then that will create, you refer to a mindset, that will create a new mindset where that's what we're going to achieve.
Are there any questions from the public? So we do have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Wolk to revisit the budget to bring the deficit to zero. I don't know what your exact wording was.
Yeah, bring the deficit--
Deficit to zero. Do I hear a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails.
My closing comment is, everyone on this board and everyone in-- My closing comment is, everyone on this board and everyone in the public, and Randy and Scott, you're fully aware of my position on this.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Next this evening, for, we have no ordinances. However, we have one resolution for consideration and possible action. This is a revised resolution from last board meeting. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending resolution number 2021-55, approving the township's acquisition of land consisting of approximately 26.87 acres located at 1036 Spring House Road from David T. Davis for nominal consideration, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement of sale and purchase, and authorizing and directing all other necessary and appropriate action to accomplish the acquisition, including execution and delivery of our requisite documents in connection with settlement and the payment of any sums that may be required. Therefore, with such amendment being for the purpose of changing, this is the difference. This is the change, changing the seller from David T. Davis to David T. Davis and Joanne S. Davis, and ratifying and confirming the agreement of sale and purchase dated November 23rd, 2021. The only change from last week is the names, just for reference to the audience. So there's no other further comment on that, Andy. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution from the board? Any from the public? Me in the chat? All right, so do we hear a motion to move forward with this revised resolution as well? I'm moved. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. I'll make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution approving the sewer planning module for Kratzer Elementary School addition. Well, good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Here with another exciting sewer planning module. It's time for Kratzer Elementary School. It's located at 20, I'm sorry, 2200 Huckabee Road. They're planning an expansion to the addition, onto the building, a new classroom to the existing school. The proposal is for 200 students, paid teachers and staff, and their additional flow is 850 gallons per day or four EDUs. And they are respectfully requesting a resolution approval for their added sewer flows.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular resolution this evening? Hearing none, are there any questions from the public? In the chat? In the chat, all right. Do I hear a motion then to move forward approving the sewer planning module as described? I'm moved. Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan. I have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next this evening, we have, under correspondence and information items, just read a few things that are happening. On Monday, December 6th, we have a Public Safety Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday, December 8th, we have Civil Service Commission at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, December 8th, also, we have a Board of Commissioner workshop at 6:00 PM. That's still tentative, more to come on that one. That was the flow mitigation.
Blood plane mitigation.
Blood plane, blood plane mitigation. Thursday, December 9th, Emergency Management Services meeting at 7:00 PM. We have some, I don't want to steal any thunder here. Okay, all right. So on Saturday, December 4th, please join us on, at Down at Covered Bridge Park. It is our new candy cane hunt. I think there's an age limit though. I don't think any of you can hunt for candy canes, I'm just saying. Maybe, maybe there isn't, who knows? Well, you're in your second childhood, manly. All right, we'll, we'll make a special exception for you. So we have our candy cane hunt, which starts at 4 o'clock, 4:00 to 5:00 PM. That should be absolutely amazing, followed by the Tree and Bridge Lighting Event, which starts at 5:30. This, this is always just a wonderful event. I hope all of you can join us. And I have to say that our staff and Public Works and everybody has done an amazing job putting that all together. Kudos to them. I'll also like to note that our Civil Service Commission still has one vacancy and alternate position. Landscape Shade Tree Commission has two vacancies, Park and Rec Board, one vacancy, and our Zoning Hearing Board has one vacancy and alternate position. We will need to set up some interviews. We have some, some new people that had put in their applications. We were held up with some, obviously, some budget meetings that were taking up quite a bit of our time, so I'm sure they will reconvene with those interviews shortly. I'd also like to, just for note for the record, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission had their General Assembly meeting last evening. It was fantastic. I think Commissioner Kelly, I think you were on the line as well. I actually think Attorney Zader was on the line as well. I thought I saw some familiar names. They went over a variety of different topics. Probably the most interesting topic that's going to be coming along is review of the municipal planning code. This is, this is huge. This is huge for everybody. So the LVPC will probably be our guiding force in all of that, in sharing information and pooling all the details together for a potential change. They also talked a lot about the freight, freight industry and traffic growth in the valley, the references to ordinances and different topics like those. So what we can do is share that information. I'll make sure that Randy gets that information. If we want to post that up on our website, we can do the same for that. But I think the biggest thing to keep your eyes on is that MPC, because that's going to be big doings for our community in the years to come, so. Was there anything else that the board wanted to add to any boards and commission information? Nope, okay. All right. We also have our public notice of the public inspection copy of the proposed 2022 budget is available at the township building if anybody is interested. And it's also on the website, so many places to gather that. We have nothing under direction and discussion items. Old business, Randy, did you have anything?
Nothing, nothing new to report on where's staying. We're still in the 60-day review period for our ENS permit application to the Lehigh County Conservation District, and we haven't heard from BCNR yet about our grant application. No news to report tonight.
Okay. Still plugging away. All right, next for consideration and possible action, we do have our November 17th Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Were there any questions or comments from the board on these meeting minutes? Hearing none, do I hear a motion for approval? I'm moved. A motion from Commissioner Kelly, do I hear a second? Make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan, and can I have a vote?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Very good. Next this evening, we have courtesy of the floor. This is the opportunity for anybody to come forth in front of the board on a non-agenda item. Is there anybody this evening who would like courtesy of the floor? But we got two people. Got a familiar face there. Good evening, Mr. Paul, how are you? We just need your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Paul Dickinson. I live at 1118 North Glenwood Street in South Whitehall Township. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to be present for Ms. Morgan's last meeting next, next week, or two weeks from now, due to my own meetings that I have to attend. But I just wanted, I wanted to come out and I wanted to voice some respect and some thanks to Tori and also to Chief Thorny, he's not here, but the Captain Zarentino as well. I retired from the Police Department in May to go to another position. And unfortunately, due to COVID and other issues, I did not get an opportunity to be at a Board of Commissioners meeting and actually officially thank the Police Department, the Police Chief, and also the Board of Commissioners and all the boards previously for the opportunities that they gave to me to pursue my career and to pursue bigger and better things. I don't know if they're better, but bigger things. One thing that I do want to say to you, Tori, in my time as an employee here for 17 and a half years, while you didn't always make the most popular decisions, made in my opinion as a resident and also as an employee, the correct decisions. I know that they may not, that may not be popular with people, but unfortunately, that's government, and that's also being leader, stepping up and making those difficult decisions and making those difficult calls. So I just wanted to, like I said, I can't be here next week to come out for your last meeting or two weeks from now. And, you know, I've seen a lot of things happen in this township in the 18 years of, 17 and a half years that I worked here, and also in the 12 years that I've lived here. Seen a lot of good things happen, and a lot of that was under the supervision of yourself, also Mr. Osborne. And I think that with this new board moving forward, there's a lot of fresh faces on this board. And I just hope that everybody takes the opportunity to remember that you have a good township, you have good employees, you have people that work very hard to be where they are, and you need to put a little bit of trust in them, allow them to run the, run the organization. I've seen it twofold the previous years, when certain managers were here, where things did not work out very well. And then I saw when there was managers that came here and were a little bit more down to earth. I'm not going to go into much more detail than that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Look forward to having your free Wednesday nights.
I'm sure I'll fill them up.
And I, on a personal level, I appreciate everything that you did to help me in the last three or four years to get one.
Well, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. That means the world. Thank you very much. Thank you. That was very nice. I appreciate that. I can honestly say, you know, in having been on this board for as long as I have and, and the staff that we have, Paul hit the nail on the head. This community is so very lucky to have a staff that is second to none, because they truly make this community shine. So thank you, Paul, very much for your thoughts. All right. Are you gonna, are you gonna top that?
I worked, Ray Piverson, 1005 Bryan Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania.
Welcome.
Again, likewise, Paul and Tori.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Kind of a, just a little back and forth dialogue, question and answer. Maybe you can kind of add some feedback. As I speak to neighbors around, if you go back 20, 20 years, you go north Whitehall, Whitehall, South Whitehall, South Whitehall was always like the king of the hill. It was always the place, and we'd talk to people, and they would say, wow, South Whitehall, that's the place. I think what I stand still is, as you travel in neighborhoods, you know, look, I'm sure you're seeing a lot of things that we didn't see years ago. And to your point, Tori, on the planning commission with, I'm thinking that's going to maybe work a little bit with what's allowed to be done on property, not to be done on property. I don't know if that's going to be brought up in the months to come as far as changes to zoning, what can be allowed on a property, on a driveway, on a street. But it's conversation that does come up from time to time. For instance, let me just give you an example. Neighbor, puts a tree down, but doesn't want to take the stump out. It's high, and weeds grow out of it. Campers on the street, old buses in the driveway, 101, 15, 18th Street, I think it is. I think that's leaving, I think the property's being sold. Tractor trailers on driveways. I don't know if they're, and your gentleman was here maybe about a month, a zoning person, he's very good, very responsive. But I didn't know if changes are going to come, or if there's going to be any feedback or suggestions or changes to what can and cannot be done in the township as far as keeping the town like your home. I don't know if I'm on the right page here, or just wanted to get some back and forth feedback.
You're, you're referring more to, towards the property maintenance. Sure, absolutely, Randy.
Hey, don't say. One of the forms we do offer here at the township, excuse me, is a request for an investigation form that can be found on our website very easily. Just type it into the search function at the top of the website. It'll pull up the form, and you simply fill that out with the address of where the, the investigation would need to occur for a property maintenance issue. That will go to our code enforcement officer, who can, you know, can then get it added to his list and actually go visit the site to see if there is a violation of some sort.
Okay.
That's our corrective action process.
Yeah, and I'll double check that, like campers in the street covered over, right, and on snow emergency roads, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you. And then the other issue is, the, and I heard the budget being read off, and I forgive my ignorance a little bit, because I really wasn't paying that close attention to it in the past. Very good, very good presentation. Open space, what's being done, how much monies are being allotted towards open space? Are we being proactive? Are we thinking ahead? We all came off the bridge farm debacle and all the rest with this whole situation. Is there money being allotted as far as getting ahead of everything? So we don't have this issue again. But maybe by law, we can't, you know, change zoning and things like that. But is that fund going to increase? Is it coming up? Is it level? Okay.
Yeah, the, the open space fund are actually funds from development that occurs in the township. So per dwelling unit, right now, it's $2,500 per dwelling unit. And then there's also a calculation for impervious surface for commercial instruction.
Okay.
So you're, I think he's talking.
Yeah, some, some of these counties have like a farmland preservation type fund. That's a different thing than what we have with our.
Okay, I apologize. That's what I meant to say. On the farmland presentation, preservation situation, like I see friends up in MacGyver, and they, and they have their meetings, and they seem to be a little bit quicker on the draw to get money into the flow to get this farmland sucked up, so it can't be basically developed.
I think the key, key to that, one of the key things we always remind people with the farmland preservation is you have to have a farmer or a landowner willing to want to sell their land for farmland preservation. They're not, if they want to sell it to a developer, or if they want, and if it's zoned for that, they can do that. So that's part of the discussion as well. And, and as a township, we've been very active with having conversations, you know, with all of those landowners of their interest level for farmland preservation or what we can do to preserve it to the best of our ability. You think, I think South Whitehall has taken an extremely unique approach with, with open space and preservation, not just farmland, because we see ourselves in a situation where maybe we don't have the ability to preserve quite as much farmland as somebody like Upper Milford, who's, who's, who's out further and has that ability. But we do find ourselves in a position where if we have open space, Kohler Ridge, you know, we can buy a small sliver of land that goes next to one of our parks to add to that open space. It might not be farmland, but it's still open space and will never be developed as houses or businesses. So we always kind of keep those different types of options in our head because we want to try and maintain the character of the community. It might not necessarily be farmland. We're going to do as much farmland as we possibly can, but we're not going to neglect what other pieces of land we might be able to work with to keep open space as well.
Kind of like Spring House Road, I live right on Kilmer.
Absolutely.
That's a perfect example.
It's a perfect example.
Yep, and I watched that property for years, that church coming, church coming, church coming for years and years and years, and that's gone there basically. And just apologize for my, just a little bit of a housekeeping, that's why, where I wanted to go with it. And I can't get out of it without asking this last question. What's going on with Ken, George, and?
I don't, I'm not, what's the status?
Is it still penned out yet?
It's all you, Tony.
You want to take that one, Tony?
It's all you, Tony.
Thank, no problem. We actually just received a set of plans for review. They feel that they are. They feel that they are in a good spot with PennDOT. They're still wrapped up, they still do not have their permit. But they are hopefully getting close enough to record plans and get all their permits. So I can't promise you, once they get their plan recording, that they're going to start building tomorrow, but... Exactly. Yeah, we actually are setting up meetings in the next two weeks or so to meet with the team and see where they're at.
And, and I would, I would highly suggest, you know, we, we talked about a property maintenance program here a few months or so ago. It didn't, didn't pass with the majority of this board. However, I do think it's something that this board should revisit, because it is of very much importance to, to the residents. So hopefully, the, the future board will, will take another look at that and consider another more robust property maintenance program.
Money anymore, but I lived in a one and a half, three bedroom, one and a half, bi-level. Four feet, that house that I sold for $120,000.
I'm sure, yeah.
I'm talking a bi-level that's six years old. That's my point, what the neighbors are saying about the, the houses, and when you go through the township, that I don't want to have a tree stump this high. Thank you so much, very good.
You're welcome, thank you for your comments. Anybody else this evening for courtesy of the floor? All right, anything in the chat? All right, our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by the interim township manager and the Director of Finance. Do I hear a motion to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills as tabulated?
I'm moved.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, do I hear a second? Come on, Commissioner Walk, give me a second.
Aye.
All right, second from Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. We have no executive session this evening, and I just wanted to be on record, how, how quick were we this evening? Fifty, sorry, I'm going to hurry up, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Kelly, do I hear a second? I'll make a second, second, all in favor, aye. Motion carries, less than an hour. All right, thank you, everybody. We kept it under an hour, great job.